Mr. Diaz, will you lead a roll call, please?
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Chair Brown.
Present.
Commissioner Cooper.
Here.
Commissioner Neblyn.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Thank you. Next, Commissioner Evans, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please?
No. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, an administrative business. Approval of the order of agenda. We have four of the folks here. That's a quorum. Is that correct?
Four, yes.
Okay, great. So we've got the minutes from February 2nd, 2015. Is there a motion to be had?
I believe first is the approval of the order of the agenda.
Oh, excuse me. Gosh, I've done that twice now. Approval of the order of agenda. Is there a motion for? I see two already. Commissioner Cooper.
I make a motion to approve the order of agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All vote. And that passes five to zero. Thank you. Next is my favorite, the approval of the minutes from February 2, 2015. Commissioner Evans.
I move to approve the minutes unless there's somebody needs to change something.
Commissioner Cooper.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All vote.
I'll need to abstain from this item. I wasn't present for that meeting.
That's correct. Noted. That passes four-zero with Commissioner Neblyn abstaining. Next, is there a designation of liaison to the city council meeting?
There is no designation of a liaison.
Great. Thank you. As there are no consent items, on to the public hearings. There's one item, which is the appeal of the zoning administrator's decision that appellant did not timely appeal zoning administrator's prior decision that a coastal development permit was not required for construction at 12 Sharon Way, APN 009291050. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the commission, on February, I'm sorry, January 14th, 2015, the city received an appeal from David Blackman asserting that the zoning administrator erroneously determined that a coastal development permit was not required for the remodeling of an existing commercial building and site improvements at 12 Sharon Way pursuant to a building permit issued on May 23rd, 2013. On January 29th, 2015, the city notified Mr. Blackman that his appeal was untimely. On February 2nd, 2015, the city received a separate appeal from Mr. Blackman of this untimeliness determination. The separate appeal of the zoning administrator's decision that the appeal is untimely is the appeal now before the planning commission. As a little bit background, the building division issued a building permit on May 23rd, 2013, for the remodeling of an existing structure and other site improvements at 12 Sharon Way. Prior to issuing the building permit, the zoning administrator determined that a coastal development permit was not required. In addition, the applicant did not propose a new use. The structure was previously being used as an office and will continue to be used as an office. On May 19th, 2014, the city inspected the work performed pursuant to the building permit. The subject improvements have been substantially completed since approximately February 19th, 2015. The appeal that was filed on January 14th, 2015, contesting the approval of the project without a coastal development permit, was filed more than 18 months after the zoning administrator's decision, in approximately nine months after the commencement and substantial completion of the project. Pacifica Municipal Code, Section 9-4.3804, provides that appeals from the decisions of the zoning administrator are due within 10 days after the action of the zoning administrator. Staff believes that the appeal lacks merit because the January 14th, 2015, appeal was untimely. Thank you. I also like to introduce Tina Wermeyer. She's the interim planning director, and Kevin Segal, our special counsel.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Is the appellant here?
Sure, absolutely.
Thanks.
I assume you're asking me to come up and talk. I'm here tonight to speak about my frustration that 12 Sharon Way got built with no coastal development permit, site development permit, or use permit. My goal here tonight is not to harm the owners of 12 Sharon Way or the city of Pacifica. I'm not even requesting you require a coastal development for 12 Sharon Way. I'm requesting you make Pacifica's permit process fair and more consistent. Development in Pacifica's coastal zone is defined as construction, reconstruction, demolition, or alteration. 12 Sharon Way is development. All development in the coastal zone requires a coastal development permit with a few exceptions. There is no exceptions allowed on 12 Sharon Way. There's no exception properties are the ones located between the ocean and the first public road, like 12 Sharon Way. No exception properties are the ones located within 300 feet of the beach, like 12 Sharon Way. It is approximately 150 feet from the beach. There are no exceptions to coastal development permits when there's a change of use. I understand that they're saying that Jim West's house, that he grew up in, somehow became an office building, and I don't know when that came, and I know that he was living in that house not too far behind us. For the planning department's decision to be correct in not requiring a CDP, all four of the following things would have had to happen: this project not be located within 300 feet of the beach, the project not be located between the ocean and the first public road, the project not be new construction, and no change of use. Without a doubt, 12 Sharon Way required a coastal development permit and a use permit. I have clearly brought up these facts in my appeal. Now I'm going to talk about the timely component at this. What I handed you guys was a request for the permits, I think, I don't have in front of me, last year, maybe June or July. You can see the date on that. I never got a response from the city of Pacifica. I requested, I asked for that repeatedly. So when they say it's not timely, I mean, 205 days went by before the city told me that there was no permits on there. It took 42 days to get this appeal. I filed my appeal four days after they gave me that letter saying there was no coastal development permits. I came to this, here, I came to you guys before, asking for help to bring this forward. There are many, the reason I'm bringing this forward is, I'm going through coastal development permits that are horrendous. I'm asked to do incredible studies. The last developer of this property, Dan Murphy, came here for a study session, went through the whole process, got an EIR because he was too close to the coastal cliffs. After about $80,000, Dan Murphy threw in the towel on this property. Just the fairness of all this. So I handed you the regulations. It's clear as clear can be. There are no exceptions. In the staff report, he refers to a single-family home. If you add 10% in height, this project was demoed to the ground. There's also, I built Francisco, that little house on Francisco, 2222 Francisco. It was a nightmare over the coastal development permits just to repair that house. The woman next door, the reason you see those garbage walls, is she's being threatened to get a coastal development permit if she loses any of those walls. The fairness, that woman, I mean, she's going to go bankrupt over this with the cities pushing her so hard in coastal development. I'm just asking for fairness. I hope to bring this to you guys' light. I'm kind of off my topic a little bit, but I don't know how you can tell me it's not timely when nobody knew, didn't even have a coastal development permit. The Coastal Commission actually says that the 10 days starts, it's 10 working days, and it starts when it's been, I'm not thinking of the name correctly, but when the decision is made public. I don't know if you guys even knew that this thing didn't get a coastal development permit. Nobody did. And to say that it's timely, there's a receipt on that paper and how long it took for them to even give me a response. So I just wanted to have a conversation tonight. I don't want 12 Sharon to have any harm. It looks like a great project. What Jim West and Tom McEnroe were using as a storage yard, what's there now is nice. And so I don't even know what I'm asking you guys to do regarding this, besides just have a discussion, look into this. Another part of it is, single-family homes in Pacifica and the coastal zone, if they're up to two stories, are exempt from a coastal development permit. They are exempt. But the city says, we don't allow those exemptions. I have no idea why, but like Randy Baron, the two houses I just framed with him on San Pedro, those are exempt. He had to pay $4,200, six months at a time, plus all the studies. And I can show, I think, I don't know if I gave you that paperwork, I can share that with you, but I've asked for that exemption in the past. They say there are no exemptions. That is a perfect use of the exemption. Building on this coastal cliff is not. It's clear. I think I highlighted the rules for you. I'm shocked that the staff report didn't give you a copy of the rules. That seems deliberate, but I don't know why we're talking about the, when coastal development permits are required or not. They don't even give you the information needed to understand it. So I'm here to answer any questions, and again, it's a great project. I'm not trying to do any harm for Pacifica or anybody, and I hope we keep this all light and just figure out a solution, and then maybe even talk about the exceptions for the single-family homes. But I'll be here to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
If there's anybody else wishes to speak on that item.
Okay, we do have one other person who does want to speak. I just wanted to see if Commissioner Campbell had questions for the appellant.
Yeah, just before we get started, I thought that we were going to jump into questions to staff on that, but we should be careful not to keep our comments and discussion limited to 12 Sharon Way and not to any other non-agendized item that might come up tonight. So I just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Good guidance. Thank you. Before bringing up the next speaker, are there any questions for staff at this point from the commissioners? Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Chair. I get, and we all get, a notice of administrative approvals every time one is given. I keep them all. I want to know why we didn't get one for this one. I looked and looked and double-checked, and I did not receive one for this project. And I thought we were supposed to get those, those in people 300 feet around the area. So that's the question I have.
At the time, the zoning administrator, the planning director, it felt that a permit, coastal development permit was not required. So basically, all that was required was a building permit. So that's probably why you didn't get a copy of an administrative approval. It was more that coastal development permit was not needed, and so basically, it was just a building permit.
I've received administrative approvals for just building permits, not for coastal permits. I've received them for just about everything the administrator has approved on his own. Why not this one?
Well, what you probably received has been, when the, certain permits, coastal development permit or use permit, there's certain permits that the, certain projects that the zoning administrator could approve administratively without having them be approved by the planning commission, and those are the ones that normally, that there's notices that that decision was made by the zoning administrator. In this case, that wasn't the case, that permit was needed.
I don't agree with that, but that's your answer. Thank you.
Commissioner Neblyn.
Thank you, and perhaps this is for Kevin, but I'm a little, I guess I'm unclear on sort of the, I guess, the scope of what's appealable. I mean, really what we're talking about here is kind of a non-action, i.e. not requiring a CDP. And, you know, ordinarily, it would seem to me that what we'd be seeing appeals of are actual actions by the community development director, or the, so I'm a little fuzzy again on why this is even an appealable matter.
Well, what I would like to do is, I do have some comments to that and some issues to address, but I would prefer to answer those after the, all the speakers have spoken and made their record.
Fair enough. Okay.
And then, I'm happy to provide that information.
Okay. Thank you. I want that, I think, earlier rather than later.
Great. Next, I've got a card here from Tom Clifford to speak on this item. Tom, you've got three minutes to discuss the appeal of the zoning administrator's decision.
Hi, everybody. Excuse me. The issue before the planning commission tonight is, was the first appeal filed by Mr. Blackman in a timely manner? That's all you're hearing tonight. In the past, the planning director has posted on the planning department window his administrative decisions, but in this case, he didn't. Now, we can all speculate as to why he did or didn't do this, but quite frankly, nobody here knows, because it was George White's decision. He's not here to answer why he did that. So to speculate that why he did that is really not our place. But without a public notice, how can the public be expected to meet a 10-day time limit? There is simply no start point. We don't know about it. Or for that matter, any time limit. I mean, simply, again, if you don't know that a decision has been made, and even if that decision is that something doesn't have to happen, it's still a decision. It was still an administrative decision that he made, and it should have been noticed because there was a clock ticking. In the interest of both open government and fairness, I believe you should hear Mr. Blackman's appeal of the planning director's decision on this project. Obviously, the project is complete, or close to complete. We're not going to come in here and say, tear it down, or any of that, but there might be a requirement, you might come up at another meeting. You can't do it tonight, but at another meeting, you might consider them actually getting the coastal development permit, and, you know, just getting it issued, you know, after the fact. Because the Coastal Commission's also going to be interested in why there wasn't any notice. Why was this decision made? And, you know, there is the 300-foot issue, there is the fact that there's a road, it's the first road between it and the cliffs in the ocean, and that this house is very close to the ocean. There are questions that should have been asked by you guys and by the public when this project went forward. Whether it was a teardown or a remodel, right now is immaterial, but there are questions that still need to be asked. I'd like to know if proper drainage was put in, or if filters were put in for all the drips that are on the new parking lot that they have. You've got brake fluid, you've got oil. I mean, it wouldn't be a big thing for them to go back and add a filtration system so that no runoff oars up in the ocean, but it's something that should have been asked. This project should have come to you. And I'm done. I've got nine seconds here.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford. We also have a card from Carol McDermott, and if there's anyone else in the audience who is to speak on this agendated item, please submit a card so that we can hear you this evening. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Carol McDermott, and I represent the owner of 12 Sharon Way, and I just wanted you to know that we bought the property with the intent of cleaning up an old truckyard, a very unsightly presence on Palmetto, and the building was being used as an office for that trucking facility. And so when we inquired the requirements for a remodel of an office building, we were told that a remodel of an office building doesn't require a building permit, a coastal development permit. And to that end, we proceeded to process our plans, and to answer the question of the gentleman previously, the building department did require all of the water quality requirements that would be required of a new construction. So while it was a remodel, we did create landscaping in part of the old parking lot that could accommodate the appropriate drainage and protect the whole area from the runoff of the project. So we put in drought-tolerant landscaping, we put in coastal-approved type of landscaping so that there's no vegetation that would be a problem for the coast. So the whole idea was to remodel a building, create a office use that was going to contribute, really, to the improvements of Palmetto. So I'm sorry if there were any misunderstandings by any members of the community, but we tried to work with the planning department and the building department to do the right thing, specifically so that a remodel would not require Coastal Commission approval for us to sort of do the right thing. So if you have any further questions, I'd be glad to address them. However, I did want to put my comments into the public record tonight, and I appreciate the fact that the appellant really doesn't want to do any harm to us, and perhaps is making a point about other ways that these kinds of things could be processed and/or handled, but from our standpoint, we've not only completed the building, but we have received the certificate of use and occupancy. So we have met all the requirements. Civil Department has completed that review, and we're very pleased to bring this new building to Pacifica. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Cooper, do you have a question?
I do have a question for the speaker. The, sorry about that. Walk back to your seat. The current use of that structure is what, and what will be the continued use of that structure?
Yes, it's an office for the adjoining mobile home park that I also work with the owners on.
Is there any overnight sleeping in that building or anything? Is that strictly, is there any overnight sleeping in that building or anything? Or is it just an office?
No, no, not all. Office use.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And by the way, on that parcel, there is a single-family home that is a non-conforming use. We cleaned up that home also, and that would be rented out as a single-family residence, but no residential use will occur in the office building because, again, it had been the office building for the trucking facility.
Great, thank you. Seeing no other members of the public to speak on this public hearing, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for discussion. Seems like a lot of questions are coming up around the requirement for notification and the consistency at which notification is, has been applied in the past. So perhaps this would be a good time to address some of those questions, and are there any other questions from commissioners at this point?
Yeah, I have my question about just the appealability as a threshold matter.
Well, if I could, I'll point out a few issues that come up that all relate to that. One, Mr. Blackman actually suggested he doesn't want to require a coastal development permit, so I'm not even sure if he's really, that's what the basis for his underlying appeal is. So if he's withdrawing that request to compel a coastal development permit application, then there's a question as to whether there's appealability there. So that might be worth clarification. Two, it is only the timeliness that is at issue here of the appeal, and the concerns that have been raised by Mr. Blackman and Mr. Clifford about the process are more general questions that I would suggest are better addressed where it's not the issue of this particular property owner's right to a building permit and the improvements that they made pursuant to the building permit. There's larger questions that are raised, which are really better suited for a different conversation, I would say, than for over this property owner's right, because the property owner relied on the building permit issued by the city. So this isn't a situation where you can so easily require a non-conforming builder to then go through the process to get a coastal development permit. The property owner has property rights now in the permit that issued, and it's not like they built it without the permission from the city. So there's a question there as to whether the city could even require a coastal development permit.
So are you suggesting they've got a vested right?
Yes. It's basically what it is. There's a vested right at issue here, and so to undo it now, or to try to undo it now, brings up a different issue than when there is a timely appeal, before there's the finality of the permit, and before there's reliance on that permit. But, so those are issues I think that the commission should consider, but as to the timeliness, again, it's just an issue as to, I understand what the concerns were, but time did pass. There was an opportunity to see that the construction was going place, was taking place. Whether or not there should have been notice that a coastal development permit was not required is an interesting issue, but the reality is, is that the construction was taking place, so it was observable that it was going forward without a coastal development permit. So I think that's an important factor to take into mind when you're deciding on whether the February 2nd appeal was untimely. So those were the points I wanted to add to the mix.
Do you have another question? You want to keep going?
Yeah, I just wanted to come back to, maybe I didn't get this quite right. I mean, again, I guess, I'm still a little bit confused about the extent to which you can appeal the planning director's decision not to require something. Again, sort of not to require a CDP. I mean, what, it seems to me that there are lots of ways you could address that. I mean, one, I suppose, is you could appeal it, but there are lots of things that the planning director or other city officials might or might not choose to require, that might or might not be appealable. I mean, you might frankly have a different judicial remedy in a context like that, but I'm trying to understand, again, the scope of what actually is appealable to the planning commission.
Well, there's a footnote, too, to the staff report that says 9-4.3804, and it talks about appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. And the zoning administrator decided here that a coastal development permit was not required. So that's what the appealable action would be. There is a question as to when, if and when there was sufficient notice, but the point I was making is that by the fact of the building proceeding, the construction proceeding without a coastal development permit is notice that one wasn't required.
So any time that, just, so I'm clear, any time that the planning director makes a determination that something isn't required, i.e. that a CDP is not required because a particular exemption applies, that's an appealable action?
I don't know right now that I would say, anything that the zoning administrator doesn't, that requires or doesn't require, but it says right here, I think it applies here. Appeals for decisions of the zoning administrator may be made to the commission within 10 days after the action of the zoning administrator. That's the first sentence of 3804.
I see it. Okay. Thank you.
And it would be a different situation if there was never any construction, because then the question would be, when does that time period start kicking in? But we have construction taking place, so there's notice that, there's sufficient notice there of the action of the zoning administrator, of the determination of the zoning administrator is what it actually says.
All right. Thank you.
All right. So I see no other questions from commissioners. I think, are we ready, oh, Commissioner Campbell.
Vote on what exactly?
Well, I think there's a motion that could be made regarding the appeal, and then I think that there may be a conversation after that, which is not on the agenda, which is to possibly agendize a discussion regarding notifications.
Yeah. I mean, it's an interesting case. I was trying to think this one through a little bit. I work for a regulatory agency that deals with land use, and it would absolutely not fly that somebody builds something and that's constructive notice, and then that is the end of the matter. And, you know, truth be told, I asked for this issue to be agendized when Mr. Blackman came up last. So it was interesting to me, you know, living in the city, when this popped up, it really was, actually, I had a lot of people, as I mentioned at the last meeting, come up to me and say, wow, what happened? That was interesting. I visited the property yesterday and looked at it, and, you know, whether it would have needed a permit or not, I think it's up for debate, but it did seem came up last. So, it was, it was interesting to me, you know, living in the city, when this popped up, it really was, actually, I had a lot of people, as I mentioned at the last meeting, come up to me and say, wow, what happened? That was interesting. I visited the property yesterday and, and looked at it, and, you know, whether it would have needed a permit or not, I think it's up for debate. But it did seem like enough use that maybe it should have come before us. Now that it's built, who's the aggrieved party and who's the person that would actually bring an appeal? To, to do what? Can't tear it down. I suppose there's some sort of civil action that could be brought against the city, I would imagine, maybe, I don't know. But...
Not that we're recommending that.
Yeah. And I'm just guessing. But, yeah, I'm not sure what, what we're, as far as the notice goes, it, it almost seems like we'd have to know whether a permit would have been necessary to, to really opine on whether the notice was necessary. Does that make sense?
Right. But that's not what we're being asked to decide on today.
Yeah, it seems a little cart before the horse on those. I'll see what any of my commissioners want to say, response to my rambling here.
Commissioner Evans. Thank you, Chair. And I was going to go back to a question for staff. I'm still back to the point of if notification was not given out, how can there be a date of appeal time start running? Again, we're up here representing the people of the city for the best for the city. And I don't think, and I'm not going to get, I, I love the, I've gone by the property today, I went by it the other day. You did a wonderful job. You did a beautiful job. From what it looked like before, it's, but that whole area is so sensitive. And, and it, I just keep coming back to that same thought. If we never got noticed, if the public never got noticed that this was approved, how can there be a timestamp on that that starts running the clock? Bottom line.
Because the city issued a permit and construction proceeded.
But nobody knew that.
The construction was visible, I understand.
Not within 10 days of issuing that permit.
But more, far more than 10 days passed. So, you, there's a question as to when did that 10 days start? But at this point, there's, that's a pretty easy answer, that it was, certainly started more than 10 days before the appeal. The exact date of the start, I don't know. But from, my understanding of the facts from staff is that it certainly started well more than 10 days before February 2nd. Or actually, I should say January, January 14th, because that was the underlying appeal. So, so, you're raising absolutely legitimate questions as to what should be the process, and I think that is a question that...
I know that doesn't have anything to do with the appeal process, but it does start the entire talk about the appeal process. And if that can't be established, I have questions that we can't even vote on an appeal. You're, you're legal.
I don't understand that last point.
If there was not given notification, nobody knew about this except for the administrator and staff. How can we vote on an appeal that the timelines are so skewed? I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm having real difficulty in putting these timelines together.
But you're, you're talking about the underlying appeal? Or you're talking about the timeliness appeal that you don't...
The timeliness, I understand the process of the timeliness of the appeal on both appeals. But it goes back to the basis of the issuance of the permit and nobody knowing that. And that's my biggest question. I know you don't really have an answer to that, but I'm voicing a concern for, for myself and the people of Pacifica. That's a very, very sensitive area. We've talked about this area before, and, and I don't want to overlook that thought.
And as I know, maybe it was the Chair, but I know a commissioner suggested that there should be consideration and discussion...
Right.
At another meeting about...
Yeah.
How this process should work.
Yeah. No, I understand that, and I totally, believe me, don't want to get in trouble. So, I totally understand that. But as long as we can ask questions, I want to get this out publicly.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the keys here are transparency, clarity, and consistency. And, and I think there's been some questions raised about those. But I do want to, this is one of those uncomfortable situations where we are being asked to do something that's very narrow, that's opening up some other questions that are not on the agenda. So, would like to make sure that we've sort of bifurcate this. Let's talk about the public hearing section, which is the appeal, and then what other actions we have to do after that, but take one before the other. Commissioner Cooper?
Again, I, I appreciate the conversation that we're having here. That's the purpose of this appeal process. That's the purpose of bringing it in front of us, so we can correct any issues that we may have as a department. Again, though, my feelings go out for Mr. Blackman. I know the frustration that you have getting the coastal permits for your other projects, and it is unfortunate that we have this in front of us today. However, I do agree with the Chair that we are in a very narrow decision-making ground here in whether or not the applicant was timely in his filing, considering that the project is done. So, taking that very narrow point, I think from a commission level, from my standpoint, I think we have a very narrow decision to make here. I certainly think that it's brought up a lot of excellent discussion that we can bring up for new agenda items to improve our process and to actually improve the transparency from which our city operates and from which the, the commission operates. And I think that's probably the lesson learned here is that we do want to have transparency, and we do want to do what's right for the City of Pacifica and the citizens that are contained in, and be fair. We want to be fair with all the regulations that we have. So, with that, I'm ready to make a motion, but I know I have another fellow commissioner that wants to speak, so I will hold off.
Commissioner Campbell.
All right, I think I articulate this a little better this time. So, my, my concern here is that there's maybe a cart before the horse issue in that it may be the case that this, it looks like the Planning Department felt like a permit, coastal development permit wasn't necessary at their discretion, and so that wouldn't have come to our, necessarily have come to our notice. And, and that, and that I find to be a very plausible scenario, having gone to the site. And, and so, as legally, this development may, may have actually passed muster as a matter of law through the, the, you know, by the city. It doesn't violate the city codes, doesn't violate the local coastal plan, all that. My concern is with the notice. I don't know if I can buy off on the theory of constructive notice because it was being built for a period of time, and people should have seen it. I, I get that that's the argument, and if that's the narrow issue we're deciding on today, whether that type of constructive notice rendered the appeal untimely, I'm really uncomfortable buying off on that theory because it really, it sets a precedent I don't want other folks to take advantage of. Yes.
Okay, well, the one point I want to make about that is don't confuse this with a scenario where somebody's building without any permit. That the issue was here that they got their permit, they got their approval. It's different if somebody is constructing without city permit. That, I'm not arguing is, is, or I'm not suggesting would be constructive notice. The issue is here that a permit was issued, the construction began, that gave the, at a minimum, anybody concerned about it inquiry notice as to whether or not permit, a building permit was issued and a coastal development permit issued. That's the difference here. Not making this point for unpermitted construction activity.
May I ask if the issuance of the permit, the building permit was noticed? You said inquiry notice, which means if someone had called and asked, they could have found out, but...
If you can address, I can't address what the notice is.
That is correct. And normally, people call every day and ask, give a permit, you know, when they spot construction being done, people call and ask, is, has a permit been issued for, you know, construction at a certain address? And certainly, they could have done that. But is there any posting notice or any other kind of notice that typically? I mean, I must, I imagine there must be some significant volume of building permits. I'm, I'm curious about what the ordinary, you know, sort of posting or noticing process is. Right. I'm not aware for building permits. So, in the context of the CDP, I mean, it was determined that one wasn't needed, so obviously, there wasn't any notice of, of that determination. That's correct. Do you believe that there was any sort of an error in having proceeded that way in the context of this case? I don't, I don't know about that, but usually, when there's a decision that a certain permit is not needed, that it's just a building permit, then there's no, I know in the past there's never been any notifications or, or postings saying it does not require a, you know, like a CDP. Would we intend to change our processes on the basis of what we've heard today? I'm just sort of trying to get a sense of whether or not we feel like we proceeded appropriately and correctly in this case. I believe so. Okay.
If I, if I might just, I think that's, where I'm at on this is that I would have rather the city took this issue head-on and come out, and that what I, I guess, I wish that what was agendized tonight was just a head-on discussion of whether this was appropriate under the CDP or not. Because then I think we could have a real discussion about, and I think perhaps the city could even, you know, prevail upon us that this was the right way to go, this was done properly, the manager was, the city manager or the city, the Plaid of the Planning Department was working within its discretion to, to issue these types of permits over the counter, basically, without a lot of public notice. That's fine, that's great. Unfortunately, what's agendized tonight and what's before me is this theory of permitted or unpermitted, it, I don't, it actually, it doesn't matter to me because sometimes unbelievably, the city makes mistakes. This issue that it was constructive notice should have tipped everyone off because it got built. I, I don't, I can't, I just really can't buy off on that. I don't want to set that precedent even once. So, and it's just unfortunate, I think, the way that this matter has come before us. I think it's cart before the horse, and that's kind of where I'm at right now.
But I, I won't repeat the point I made before about that there is a difference when there's construction proceeding pursuant to a duly issued permit. But keep in mind, then, that the remedy, there really isn't a good remedy, though, if, you can't address the merits of the CDP without a timely appeal. Because then you would have property owners who've relied on a building permit, like we have here, that proceeded, that did nothing wrong. They got their permit from the city, they do their construction, and then a year later, two years later, four years later, 20 years later, somebody comes in and says, that wasn't done right. And how do you then take away their reasonable reliance on a duly issued permit where they have a vested property right? So, if you want to address that question as to the legitimacy of the CDP, which is not the question before you, you have to keep in mind what the negative consequences of that are.
If I, if I could just add, I, I fully appreciate your, your argument and your concern, and I think that the length of time, a whole, a full year, should be taken under consideration. I get what you're saying. If this, this permit was issued last month, and, and, and we're only a month away, I, I get it. I, I don't, I, I appreciate what you're saying. But in this particular instance, we're speaking of a year or more, you know, so I think that that, the, the, the length of time, you know, could be taken into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Nivellin, I see you have more questions?
I guess it's more the nature of a comment. I mean, I, I am somewhat compelled by sort of the, sort of the concept of vested rights. I don't know if it's, if we've got this agenda, engendized quite right in terms of, and maybe we do, in terms of just sort of making a finding that at the end of the day, we're dealing with what really is a vested right, particularly given that the project is essentially built out. And I, I do think that's a slightly different, well, I guess not. So, I would be inclined, I guess, to, to, to move in a direction that would sort of speak to timeliness or a lack of timeliness in, in light of, again, sort of the, the argue, or the discussions we've had around the vested rights that the property owners have at this point. But I do share some of the concerns that my colleagues have expressed.
Yeah, I think, and to your point about the vested rights, I think you're absolutely right. This is a vested right, and actually, I don't think this, this discussion or any future discussion is really going to have much impact on the, the landowner. I, I think she got her permit, she went through the proper city procedure, and I think, and she did a great job, and I think, I think that's done. So, I think what we're talking more about is, you know, did, did the city do the right thing with regard to, A, notice, B, permitting? Permitting, not before us tonight, maybe, maybe not. Very plausible that the city did do the right thing. And then it comes down to whether the, whether, you know, there's adequate public notice. If the city didn't do the right thing. Anyways, I guess my point is, I don't even want to vote on this. I don't even, I, I'm kind of wondering if this, this matters even, should even be before us, quite frankly.
Well, I mean, the, Mr. Blackman did say he doesn't want to have to require a CDP of this property, so you could inquire, that would be the relief. If the appeal is granted, it would mean that the next question is, on the merits of the appeal, for it'd be agendized for another day, should a CDP have been granted or not? Or been required or not? And then the issue would be whether, whether that decision was correct, and if the decision was that a CDP should have been required, well, then you're talking, then you've come face to face with the vested rights problem, and how do you require a CDP? And what if they don't get a CDP? Because they go through the process, and it gets appealed to the plant, to the Coastal Commission. Then you have an illegally built project, in theory. So, there's really, the, the granting of the appeal doesn't lead you to a path to make a good resolution of the issues of concern. Whereas alternatively, going back and looking at this as a policy matter and deciding at a different meeting, what should the process be is a viable course of conduct. And that's, that's the point I'm making. But if you, if you're not sure that it should be appealed, you might want to bring back Mr. Blackman to, to address that, because he did say, I don't want to require the CDP process actually for this project. He said that more or less. I don't know exactly what his words were, but that's what the relief of the appeal would be.
Right. And I think the difficulty I think we're having up here is, in either case, we're being asked to render some sort of advisory opinion, you know, well, under certain circumstances, this might have been duly noticed. Depending on the facts and circumstances, we don't really know. And then if we actually appeal, get this thing appealed, we're going to be talking about, well, it's built, so we're going to be rendering another advisory opinion on it, except that it maybe it would be appealed to the Coastal Commission, so...
I don't think the issue tonight is an advisory opinion. The issue tonight is whether the appeal is timely or not under the facts presented.
I'm interested in hearing Mr. Blackman address this question.
I wanted this to be lighter. I wanted this not to harm the city. I think if this appeal goes forward, I'm hearing that this could get out of our hands and go to the Coastal Commission. I don't want that to happen. I'm willing to withdraw this. What I would like to do is have a discussion about the permit process, about even the specific permit process. A permit was required, it absolutely was required. You read the rules, it was required. Maybe we can do that. If I get rid of this appeal tonight, maybe you guys can agendize this, and we can have that conversation. Nobody needs to get hurt in, in this thing. I just would like things to be done in a fair manner. The timeliness of this, I put a public records request in asking, because I saw the building. I knew it was being built. You guys seen it being built. I asked, is there permits? No permits? What's going on? No response till January. I filed the permit, I filed this appeal four days after. That is timely. Anybody who's not timely is the City of Pacifica's staff that took 205 days to answer that question. I appealed in four days. If they can show me a letter in that 205 days that said there was or wasn't, they don't have one, they wouldn't even answer me. I did a full public records request. I gave you a receipt for it. So, it's absolutely timely. I know I can go to city council and rewrite my argument here and get that, but that's just turning a mess for everybody. So, I'd like to withdraw it. I don't even know if you can do that. I will do whatever you guys want me to do. If we can withdraw this, have a conversation so we don't get ourselves into this again. That was a very precious piece of property that was supposed to have much more oversight. If you read those rules, there was a mistake was made. So, that's why I wanted to move forward. I don't want any litigation for Pacifica, the Coastal Commission, or 12 Sharon Way. So, if that's the solution, let's do that. So...
Commissioner Campbell? One last comment. I mean, if the appeal's going to get withdrawn and... I mean, if the appeal's going to get withdrawn, and, uh, where I go, I guess, just where I'm going to go with any sort of decision, I think, on the notice argument is, is that I'm going to vote, at least that, right now, unless I hear different, that the, the constructive notice argument, I just, I'm not going to go with, I'm not going to say that under the hypothetical, that this decision by the city was wrong, the notice was, 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 was right, so...
You wouldn't need to do anything. If he withdraws the, the appeal, then you don't have any action.
Right.
Except for Mr. Blackman, we could postpone it until next meeting, and then see if he withdraws. Because we, as a, as a board, can't-
Can he withdraw the record right now, I mean, isn't that...
I, I don't see any reason why, if, if he, I mean, it wasn't fully, I'm not sure if he was really saying he will withdraw, but if he wants to withdraw the appeal, I don't see any reason for you to-
So, Mr. Blackman, I formally ask you, are you dropping, are you withdrawing the appeal of the zoning administrator's decision that the applicant did not timely appeal zoning administrator, et cetera?
Yes, I am withdrawing my appeal, I am hoping you guys do the right thing, I hope this conversation, and we get to the bottom of this, and I hope we can have more conversations in the future to make the permit process fairer for everybody, that's my wishes. So yes, I'm withdrawing my appeal.
And I, I think along those lines, with, with respect to Mr. Blackman's comments, I think you raised a number of important issues that we spent a fair amount of time wrestling with, it would be, I think, appropriate to ask staff to schedule some time, whether it's in the context of a study session or otherwise, for us to, you know, tackle some of these, these issues and, you know, deal with, you know, issues around notice, around streamlining, perhaps, some of the, some of the issues that could use streamlining. So I'd, I'd like to ask staff to coordinate, maybe perhaps with, with you as the commission president, if you'd be so kind, and maybe Mr. Blackman and others who might have an interest in helping to frame up some form of agenda around that.
Absolutely, thank you. Yeah, I think that what ended up on our agenda today could have used a little more thought, and I think that it's brought up numerous issues. I'm just going to read from Commissioner Cooper's notes. But, you know, adding on to that, I'd propose that we agendize a conversation around the notification and policy, review the rules, procedure for notice, reinforcing the commitment to the Coastal Commission, and, you know, just get a sense for, it almost seems like because this was a non-decision, that therefore, that doesn't have to be noticed, but the non-decision can have the same implication as the decision, that's where I think things get really interesting. So, I'd like to make sure that we agendize that properly, so that we can have a conversation around the notification process. I'm consciously not adding a conversation around whether or not a CDP was required, but I will, I want to ask the fellow commissioners whether they feel that, that's something they would want to agendize as well. Commissioner Evans?
Well, number one, I would, I would like to put this on the agenda for a meeting and not a study session, I believe, just for simple fact of public awareness.
Very well.
Um, my second thought is, I think, I don't want to hurt anybody, and, and nobody wants to hurt anybody else, but we need to look at the coastal requirements and review those, I think, and see if, I mean, when I got on the planning commission, there were several things that I was told that would come before me. Coastal permits, things out of the ordinary, right, there's two things I, I think we've hit tonight. So, again, I don't want to go back up, I want to go forward, but I, I do want to agendize this for a future meeting soon, and let's talk about it. That's my thoughts.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper?
Yeah, I, I do, don't want to agendize the, the issue at hand, and whether or not this permit was issued or was not issued. I certainly think, though, in a lot of jurisdictions, it's very important that the citizens, when they go buy a property or go buy a construction site, can look at a building permit, can see if it's, what was issued, see what was it for. I think that we all need that, there's a lot of agencies out there that require you to post that permit when you're doing construction. It's not only for the building inspector's use, but I think it's also a good idea for the passerbyers and for the neighbors. So, you know, I think that those are some of the processes that we, as a commission, can, can look and, and talk about, as well as finding out what some other agencies do and what they require from people who are building within the area. I'm glad that we had this discussion, I know it was very uncomfortable for us as well as to potentially have given a decision on an appeal process for when we're not trying to cure actually the process itself, so I think that it's, thank you, Mr. Blackman, I think that it's very advantageous for us to move forward with this, rather than, than dwell on what, what had happened here, and I, that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Nibbelen?
Nothing to add, thank you.
Okay, so, I propose wrapping up the public hearing section of this by reading the following statement, and, and you need to listen really carefully, Mr. Blackman. "Anyone agreed by the action of the planning commission has 10, 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. If any of the above actions are challenging court issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing." Next on the agenda is, "There are no items for consideration," so we move into the communications section of this meeting. Any commission communications? I see none.
Actually...
There is one. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. I met, come to speak of it, I met with Mr. Blackman on a completely different project, several, a week or so ago, that he's working on, and he wanted to get my thoughts on it, so I just want to put that out to public notice.
Thank you. Seeing no other communications from the commissioners, any staff communications?
Yes, I actually wanted to let you know that the direction at this point is going to be moving back to full minutes for the planning commission. So we are in, the, the recruitment for the regular positions still open, so we're in, I guess, a turnover process, so, so it won't happen immediately, but that's on the horizon, so I just wanted to let you guys know that.
Thank you. Next, oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the planning commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. Mr. Blackman?
I missed an important thing to say, is that my project on Palmetto was being stalled, and Tina came to our town, I don't know how long she's going to be here, she called me, asked to touch base with the projects I have moving forward and how she can help. She was an amazing help, that's why you're hearing this appeal tonight, it was completely stalled, and she's one to help me get here today, and she helped my project that's coming forward next, maybe, she said the first or second session in April, we're just waiting for a few things to get buttoned up. So I just wanted to tell Tina thank you, and I hope she sticks around, but, another piece that I was mentioning to her, I don't know if she really grasped it, and I don't know how, I lost track of how long you guys have been commissioners, but years ago, I've been doing this, the first permit I got, coastal development permit was in 99 with Lee Diaz, and before that, they were just building permits, but a change happened about, under Michael Crabtree's direction about four years ago. It used to be that the staff did the SEQA determinations, they're actually required to by law, and what that does is, when they do a SEQA determination, it starts a clock. And Michael Crabtree found a loophole, because, I don't know if you guys were on the, when this happened, and he came up with recommended SEQA, and that doesn't start the clock. And that's something he started to do, so the time, he can circumvent the Permit Streamline Act. I would love it if you guys would look into that, maybe have another public conversation, this happened maybe five or six years ago, and it allows him to go, it allowed him to go as long as he wanted without bringing, when the plans got complete, of coming for a public hearing. So staff's supposed to make that decision, and all the cities make that decision, but we made a change in Pacific under Michael Crabtree's to, to not do the timeline, so that was another thing, and thanks again, Tina.
Thank you. Well, I'm a big fan of any oral communication that involves kudos for staff, so thank you. Mr. Clifford, I saw you-
Oh, my God, I put down two things.
Okay. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, I missed that.
I actually, I was going to come back up. I have a frog. Anyway, I won't want to give, have you guys take on another task, and the, the task I'm suggesting is, is for you to reach out to the Economic Development Committee and set up a subcommittee between the two of you, so that a couple of you, a couple of them, a staff member, get together and start looking at how the planning commission and the Economic Development Committee can actually work towards real economic development here in, in Pacifica. I think it would be, I think the, the talent is, is just going to waste by you guys not doing that. You have, have the skills that could make that happen, they have the skills that could make that happen. Working separately, we're not getting much in the way of economic development. If you work together, you might actually get there, and that would be a really good thing for the City of Pacifica. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And that brings us to the end of our agenda for this evening. Are there any motions, Commissioner Nibbelen?
Well, I'll move to adjourn.
Commissioner Cooper?
I'll second.
All vote? And that passes five to zero, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for the input on that. Interesting issue.
Always a discussion. Panel.
Just, you know, never forget.